The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have my book.
Nope.
Roll call. I can't ever remember that thing. Okay, we'll do.
Roll call.
Hey, Pippiya?
Here.
Frye?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Hughes?
Present.
Baikman?
Present.
Price?
Present.
Barron?
Here.
Crum? Here. We have a four.
First up, we have approval of the minutes. See if they have any changes, additions to those minutes.
Move to approve regular minutes, August 10th, 2020.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayo.
Ayo. Next up, we have public comment. Is anybody here for five minutes of public comment? Okay, business and discussion items. First up, we have Black Squirrel Bark Park. Maureen?
Good evening. We are the Black Squirrel Bark Park Committee. I'm Maureen Chris, I've got Dip Hawkinson, Wade Maddox, and Mackenzie Prott with me. We came to the city council in June to discuss the Black Squirrel Bark Park. At that time, we were asked to come up with some alternatives to the bridge, which we have done. As you can see in the letter that we sent ahead of time, that Don Landall has generously agreed to construct and donate a custom bridge. Along with that, we would have expenses for abutments and parking, and our cost for that would be expected to be about $15,000. We're asking permission to go ahead and continue our fundraising, and when we get that $15,000 raised, we would like to begin construction on the bridge. I think when we get, see some action going down there, I think the community will be very supportive. As you can see in our survey last year, we had 140 people complete it, and 54 residents volunteered to help in a number of different ways. And so, we're asking permission as well as financial support.
You know where we're at with financial support for next year?
Your what?
You know where we're at for not financial support for next year?
I have no idea.
You come to the budget meeting, you know, we gave you the signs of the dog park for our money for next year. We did the signs. You know, you were here for that meeting.
I was here for that meeting.
So, I mean, I don't know where we're going to come up with the funds, you know. We're just like everybody else. We gotta set a budget. We went through the budget. You were here, you know. I don't know where funds are going to come from.
Most of the dog parks I looked at online and stuff, most of them, you know, they built their own fences or whatever, you know, they, girl scouts or different groups, you know, put up their own fences. They didn't have somebody, so therefore, it costs more fences also than what this here did. So, I mean, I don't know if that's an option too, which would make it cost less, so.
We have numerous ideas on ways to fundraise. We did the Pony Up Marysville Match Day last year, and we are signed up to do that again this year, as well as other ideas as we move forward.
But, I mean, this is a lot of money to put up fence, I mean.
Right. But I think that we, you know, if we can get started, show people that we are invested in this, and start with the bridge. I think, you know, potentially, we could have the bridge in there, and people could use that area, understanding that it's not fenced while we're raising funds. I think there's some options.
But otherwise, I mean, $30,000 or whatever is a lot of money for the city to have to come up with, so, I mean.
Yes, and we are by no means asking you to fund the fence. I mean.
I think the goal would be, you know, if we get a driveway there, some place to park, we get a bridge there, well, that's half the battle, you know. And if people see that go up, we see a sign, start, you know, putting those things in the ground, well, then now they've got more reason to start, you know, contributing to more fundraising. It's hard to keep asking for money when you don't really see things moving forward.
And I think that's especially true since the previous efforts were aborted. I mean, people weren't like, is this really going to happen? So, they're probably because they wanted to see something happen.
So, I mean, let's assume that we make the same amount of money for the Pony Up as we did last year. You know, we're $6,500 there that we've come up with, that's, you know, probably close to half of what the bridge installed. So, I mean, even if you guys are willing to close the gap there, and then we can tackle the fence next, or something like that, I don't know if that's some, you know, more negotiable point.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I don't like words around and about, you know, definite figures look better. Around and about, it is nothing definite there, and you just mentioned about you're going to have that Pony Up thing. Why don't we see what kind of participation we have in this Pony Up thing, and you guys come back to the next meeting, and let's talk about it then, and then the city knows. This is going to be for the city, and the city will help out. It's kind of nice to know where they're going to go with it, instead of around, around and about.
Well, let me explain that a little bit. When we, when we were here in June and discussed the Marshall County Bridge that we were going to try and recycle, the cost to move and install that with everything we're talking here was $15,000. I have been in contact with InLine Construction, but I just heard from Don Landall back last week, and InLine is working on a bid to see what changes it would be. This is going to be less work for them. So, it, I say around because that's what moving out of the bridge and installing it in the same way was going to be.
The main change between when we were here last and now is that we've got a brand-new bridge that's going to be donated, and on InLine's bid on here, they've got, they have $1,800 in that bid of $15,650 that was just to narrow that bridge that we were going to repurpose. So, we've come down $1,800 right there. And if you were worried about the liability of that bridge that we wanted to relocate, well, there shouldn't be much liability.
Yeah, this is going to be a much better bridge.
Yeah.
We shouldn't have to do any maintenance on it for a long time.
And he's wanting to make it that two-way, so you know, you don't have the liability of someone trying to drive over it.
Yeah.
There could be a divider in the middle. So, that was a big thing. We wanted, it sounded like the bridge was a big issue, so we made some improvement there. We're doing the Pony Up again. We've got, we've done a lot of brainstorming on fundraising. Obviously, that's hard with COVID to do fundraisers where you get a big group of people together and fundraise. But, you know, some of the ideas early on would maybe be to sell benches with some retail markup in them, make some money that way. Sell signs that you can zip tie to the fence, you know, once we get the fence put up, advertise your business, and just, you know, do some retail markup in the signage. You know, there's things like that that you can do where you're not trying to get 100, 200 people in the same place at the same time, but, you know, we're facing the same challenges everyone else is, so.
And knowing that the city is supportive is going to help the residents be supportive as well. Pony Up Marysville is going to happen before the next council meeting.
Yeah, I think it's the sixth, isn't it?
The fourth.
Fourth?
Fourth.
Refresh my memory, the parking area, kind of discussed and outlined here, was that going to be rock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's $3,400 there. It's a lot of rock to just make a, you know, a drive-through basically, but it would be also parking.
I mentioned that that's some sort of big rock, some sort of base, because I don't think there's anything under it. It'd just be.
Yeah.
Then you wanted waterers, and that's more too, besides this.
Oh, the water.
Go ahead.
Yeah. We don't need that right away. It's your job to, you know, make sure that your dog is hydrated at home.
Or bring water.
Or bring, and they make formal water bowls or Tupperware bowls, yeah, that's. We would like to have a water spigot. That's the extent of the water that we wanted. Hopefully, that would come someday.
But that could be added later.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have the rock things in order to do this, or would that be something we'd have to contract with and get hauled in if we were going to start moving?
Well, that's actually included in InLine's bid.
Is that, the rock parking is part of their bid?
Yeah. So, in that original $15,650, minus $1,800 that we don't need anymore, we've got $9,800 for labor for footings and abutments, use of a crane in there, and then rock in the parking area. So.
Did Landall set that bridge?
Actually, InLine did.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Steve Blumer set it, and actually.
So, they used a crane to take it off of Landall's truck and put it on?
Actually, Steve used some type of track hoe or backhoe to lift it and place it. And what he did was, he built the abutments, and then Don built the bridge to fit the abutments.
Okay.
Yes, I'm not sure that we'd need a crane for this new bridge.
I'm not sure.
But that's not the bulk of the cost.
Right.
It is shorter than we had originally looked at too, so there would be, there's some dirt work to be done to close that gap down to a 40-foot bridge.
It's not an active waterway, really.
Depends.
Yeah.
Depends on how hard it rains, huh?
Well, no, wait a minute. Well, it's a little bit more work being done, dirt work, is that going to increase your concrete cost?
I don't think the abutments would be any different than what we had planned before. Actually, because what you had was repurposed to 10-foot, and now Don, is he talking eight?
Eight-foot.
Yeah, but how, how long was your first bridge, Maureen? I don't remember. Do you know?
The, the Marshall County one?
Yeah.
I think it was 50 feet.
That's, I'm just, you're getting five feet closer on each side. I didn't know if your concrete would have to go a little bit deeper to get what you're, I'm just.
Try to compensate for dirt work more so than concrete.
40 feet is what Don, he didn't limit it to 40 feet, he said that's what he would like to do.
Yeah, and that's fine, I'm just.
Have you been searching for used chain link fence on like on Internet?
Actually, a little bit. There is some that the Blue River Rail Trail did not use, when they put up the fence along the U.P. rail yard. So, we have a little bit, because I'm familiar with that project as well, so I think that's a possibility. I think there are numerous ways that we could reduce the cost on the fencing, kind of like we said in there. We could reduce the overall size. This is a big part. Recommendation is usually an acre per, you know, all dogs and small dogs. We made it this big because that space was there, but we could begin by doing, you know, that's three to four acres, I think. We could reduce it, and, you know, start there and see how it goes, and expand later if we needed to. And we could do volunteer labor to put the fence up. In my opinion, this is the absolute max that that fencing is going to cost, and we have nowhere to go but down because of these other options.
The, I think it was consensus that we have, he was going, if he was going to do this, he was going to donate the chain link fence that's on the basketball courts that buy the leading field. Donate, donate some of that, so.
Great.
I don't know if that'll work though.
Does that suit the organization?
Oh, I, I had a talk with some of our guys, and I don't think that's suitable.
I'm just saying it was consensus from us that we could do that.
So, at this time, I mean, what's the ask? How much does the city need to contribute? What do we need to do? I feel like the work is moving forward on this. We need to show support by doing something to prove that this is actually going to happen. I believe they're going to follow through. So, what do we need to do to get there?
I guess we will run with whatever you give us, you know. If you choose to give us $1,000, we're going to work a little bit harder, and it's going to take us a little bit longer. And if you give us a little bit more, we'll be able to get started a lot quicker.
Do you guys have any idea, you talked to the people up in Beatrice with their dog park, do they have any idea how many people actually utilize it?
I didn't get numbers from them.
Get numbers?
I know that they, their fence is like major sturdy fence, but they had FEMA money, I think, because of the flooding that they used for their fencing area.
Okay.
I wanted to think where the location is as you come into town is optimal. There are people who are even traveling, a lot of people travel with their dogs and stop and, you know, maybe.
Exercising.
Quite exercise them, and then go get gas, or, I mean, just use your city.
It's close enough to the park if they, there was signage in the park.
I mean, it's right when you come over that bridge, I mean, would have signs, I'm assuming.
And that's actually where this began with convention and tourism. That's why it's coming from there, is because we saw that as an amenity for tourists.
And the location is optimal when you come into town.
I think maybe start out smaller and then expand from there if we see that it gets used a lot. Maybe, I don't think we need to be huge, and if it works out really well, we can always add to it, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, and that's why I think what, you know, kind of what Dave said as far as starting with doing some of the parking in the bridge, starting to get some of the project going, that is starting small, and that is kind of seeing, you know, people get excited and gins people up.
You know, an acre fencing, you know, is a lot built cheaper than what three or four acres are going to be.
Yes, I don't think we need that big of a one maybe to start with.
Because even if the small dogs area was, you know, fenced in first.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a bridge first.
Yeah.
That's what I think the biggest thing is.
Getting over the other.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what to ask for specifically. I know the budget's tight, but, you know, I thought if we, you know, if we look at it in phases, kind of like the bridge and the parking first, and then tack away the fenced area next, well, if we, you know, I'm just throwing out generalized numbers, if we do the Pony Up and we come back with, you know, $6,500, would you guys match $6,500? And then we are on the gap to close the rest of this 15 grand?
Do you feel like if we matched up to a certain amount, or offered that, would that aid in your fundraising?
I think so. I think it's showing that we've, we've got all these people to donate and help us, and then you guys are saying, okay, we're willing to do the same. We're willing to put in as much effort as you have so far.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, as far as it helped their fundraising, and it would limit our exposure if we say we will match up to 5,000 or whatever. I think that's a reasonable number.
I think 5,000 is plenty to start with.
What did you last year, 3,000?
Yeah, 32.
I think it's 5,000.
Yep. 32, 67, so.
Yeah, so that would probably get you pretty close then.
Well, I'd make a motion that we move forward with offering matching funds not to exceed $5,000 to the Marysville Dog Park Fund on the day of Pony Up Marysville only, in the amount of $5,000.
Coming out of what fund?
Coming out of, what do we have in special parks? Probably not that.
Well, that's probably the best fund. Well, I gotta grab that. We're expecting a reimbursement of $8,000, so.
They all say out of special parks.
That'll be fine.
Just so you guys know too, we had talked about, hopefully, if and when we get city support, we want to see what maybe the county would do for us as well, but we're not going to ask the county for help if we're the city's going to back this, so.
Because, yeah, they'd send you here for.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion down to second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven more. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayo.
Next up, we have appropriations ordinance number 3730.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance 3730.
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayo.
Next up, we have appropriations ordinance number 3730.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance 3730.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Frye?
Right.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Ayo.
Okay. Next up, standing committee reports. Street.
Yes.
Yes.
When did we decide at the, that we were going to give money to the, um, does it money for the street signs? Downtown, street signs?
During the, well, there's money, there's money in the budget for it, but we haven't approved any signs.
We didn't decide to give them anything.
You got, well, it was.
We talked about it at the budget meeting, but we did not decide what to give them.
You made a line on, or we, it was listed out as a line item. Yes, you're correct, you haven't approved it yet.
That's right.
Right, so.
So, the paper said that we were going, the city was going to give them money.
It's in the budget, but we haven't approved any.
Right, you haven't approved it yet.
I mean, they'll, they still gotta get them designed and figure out exactly which signs they want to do first.
Yeah, I had a lot of calls about that too.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that in the, in the paper, and it wasn't white.
They said it was all approved, and it's going to go in, and that, somebody put the wrong dope out.
We, we put money in the budget for it, but that's as far as it is right now.
We did?
Yes, yes.
Remember, they asked for, like, 70, 80, and we said we'll give them half this year and half next year.
$35,000, yeah.
Yeah.
We talked, we talked about it.
You approved it to go in the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, because if, if I remember right, it's along the highway is where they're concentrating at, and then I think the sign on the east, east end coming into town, wasn't there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we, because we allotted half. Yes, it was.
Because I told them we weren't going to approve both of them.
Yes. Yes.
All right.
Anything else on Street? Got everything chipped and sealed now, then?
Yeah, the chip and seal is done for the year. We're waiting on Hall Brothers to do the mill and overlay for six, that first half of Sixth Street.
Okay. Where we, I guess it's wastewater slash Street, but where are we at on that, on South Sixth there?
Can't hear you.
Where we at on the South Sixth on that drainage?
He's almost, they were just.
It tore up for a while.
They are putting, they were just putting, oh, we had to order a couple more sticks of, of pipe to put the last portion in, but they had it dug.
It's dug out.
Where it needed to go, yeah.
Because I've had a few calls about that.
Right.
Asking what its status is. They've had lots of little battles down there. You ought to walk down and check it out. We ought to be, we ought to be glad it's stopping where it's stopping at.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the concrete drainage tubes are cracking.
Oh, really?
And, yeah, so, everything keeps going like this because they're trying to repair it and trying to save it the best they can.
Yeah.
I was down there today. I think they've done a hell of a job.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah, that, that concrete basin box is probably about as big as this horseshoe, you know. It's big, yeah. Yeah, and it's, yeah, because it looked like they had one section done, and then it broke off sometime when it was just hanging there, and they had to redo things to add more.
Yes. There are, there are challenges down there, but they are working through them, that's for sure.
I think they're, I think they're doing a pretty good job down there myself.
It'll definitely be an improvement when it's done.
Oh, yeah. Anything else on Street? Water, wastewater?
It's warm.
I, I had somebody ask me today about the way our wastewater and water is calculated as far as water bills, and so, I caught Austin a little bit earlier today, but I said, well, I'm not an expert, but I'll bring it up to council, and you can watch it on Blue Valley and get a little education. We are not averaging water bills, correct? We are just averaging sewer.
Sewer, the sewer portion of it, and which months are we basing it off of, Cindy?
April, or what, we base it off of?
Yes.
Um, why did you ask me now? Earlier. It's December, January, December, January, February, March, I think, those four months. It's the average you use in the winter is what we use for your set sewer in the summer, which is for the month's usage in April, May, June, July, August, and September, I think. I think October is the, no, November is the month that it isn't. So, it's, it's the average of what you use in the winter, so that if you want to water your yard, wash your car, clean your deck, whatever.
Water that's not going down the sewer.
Water that's not going down the sewer, they don't charge you the extra sewage on that, or the sewer charge on that, because otherwise, your sewer is based directly on how many gallons of water you use.
So.
Because the theory is it goes down the drain.
Sure. They also ask as far as a second meter, which we have a number, I don't know how many second meters are in town.
A lot.
A lot.
There is no sewer charge associated with that.
Ever.
Otherwise, is it the same rules as a regular meter as far as minimums, et cetera?
The minimum is just the water minimum, yes.
Okay.
So, that's only 20-some dollars, not 40-some dollars, because it's just the water minimum.
Just the water.
Because there's never any sewer attached to it, that's correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was all clear, and.
That's correct.
I was going to say, most second meter hookups are for spring, springboard systems.
Some people have them for hydrants, that they just want to have a hydrant and run their hoses and that kind of stuff, but, yes.
Yep.
But they can't go down the sewer.
Right.
Second hydrant.
Anything else, water, wastewater? Parks and Rec? We've got the tennis court agreement and the drainage area agreement in your packets. Just a few little changes that the committee came up with, not much.
Right, and then, we will have a clarification on number 13. John had come up with a better, a better.
Drainage area. Drainage area. Right?
No, the tennis court. Tennis court 13. Just a more descriptive, no use of Beatty Depot is basically what it is.
For storage.
For storage, yeah.
For their stuff.
Yeah. So, that would be incorporated.
Now, does this include the tennis clinic that they hold each year? Does that include the agreement? That, that is?
They don't, that's, yeah.
That's completely se, separate. We don't have an agreement or anything in writing for that at all.
For that?
Right.
So, if somebody wants to go down, you, they just can't use the tennis courts when she's having the tennis clinics, then, so?
It, it's like a first come, first served all the time, so if she's there first, then she's, they're there. I mean, that's how all the parks are, so first come, first served, if she's the first one in the morning, then she gets to use it, sorta thing.
And it's private, it's, that's not the schools.
Yeah, and that's not the schools.
That's why it doesn't, it's not in this agreement, that's her personal.
So, did you have a Parks and Rec committee meeting, or where are we at on the Parks and Rec people? Do we, do we have somebody that's gonna do it now?
There's, that, there are two people that are interested, but that was not discussed at the Parks and Rec meeting.
No.
Just these contracts.
Right.
So, we have somebody that's-
There's people interested right now.
Okay.
They're, they're trying, finding more information now that we got.
So, we still don't have anybody?
Correct.
Move to approve the tennis court agreement, U S D three sixty-four.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion for the drainage area agreement?
Move to approve the drainage area agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Has it, excuse me, one thing, is that approved by the, this, they're going along with it?
This goes to the school for their approval. So, you guys are-
What if they don't?
Then it comes back to us.
Yeah.
If they didn't sign it and then send it to us?
No, no, no.
Okay. That's all I wanna know.
Uh, next up, we have Cemetery and Airport, which we did have a-
We didn't vote there.
What's that?
Was this even gonna vote on that?
Oh, we did.
We did.
Yeah. Who voted on that?
Went all the way to the vote, yeah.
Yeah.
No, we voted.
We did.
On both of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we did have a committee meeting Cemetery and Airport last week.
Airport.
Yeah, airport, basically. When the whole lot, did, oh, did we find anything about if there are any funds available for the street and the parking area?
She was doing research on that.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would've had all this information in there. She's doing, um, the, the meeting was about, um, a possible project. Right now, on our list, as a, the top project are the taxiways to the, to the hangars, but we, we did that, uh, so, uh, I propose possibly building a new hangar, um, so that, um, we can maybe entice somebody from an old, from one of the other hangars to move and possibly knock it down, uh, and, and get rid of some of the isores, or entice more people to move to our airport, uh, which there have been on occasion people asking if there are spaces. Um, that is one of the listed items on our five-year or whatever airport improvement, uh, list. Um, they asked, the committee asked me to do some more research, uh, possibly into using airport funds to do the, uh, the street, uh, up to, and, uh, and the, um, parking lot, uh, for the airport, as well as different sizes of hangars. Um, hey, was there any other things I missed? I think I asked all the questions. I can-
No, I mean, it, base, I mean, kinda consensus of the committee was that, or the board is that they would-
It's wild.
First, they would like to pursue, if they could, the street and parking lot. If that money can't be used for that, then the hangars, in the interim, with the long-term project being widening, they'd like to see that runway widened out.
Right.
But we can't use the funds for that for, like, five years.
Right, uh, and that's one of the top priorities, uh, of the airport, um, advisory board, was to widen the runway, um, up to seventy-five feet, and, um, which would allow for larger airplanes to land, uh, but, to do that project, we would need discretionary funds from the FAA. Our engineer is telling us that it, they, they already dedicate, uh, the FAA discretionary funds for different projects over the time, so it probably will take four to five years to get that discretionary funding. Uh, in the meantime, we have FAA entitlement funds sitting there, which we recently, a few months back, approved for, uh, expiring entitlement funds to go to a different project. If we don't do a project coming up, um, we would have to do that again. Another hundred and fifty thousand dollars would go to a different project in Kansas, um, which is beneficial to them, uh, but it's just seeing that money walk away.
Yeah, if we don't use it, we lose it, so-
Yes.
What'd you think would be really a good idea, because most of those hangars up there are really isores.
Mm-hmm.
It's either build something new, one by one, we could use it on that, or use, can we use the money to clean them up, paint them, do something to them, because they really-
It depends on-
Yeah, the problem is, we don't own those hangars.
Somebody actually, I thought they just rented it.
They rent the land.
They rent the land.
Yeah, we, we own the land, and they own the building.
The structure is an improve, is legally a, an improvement on leased land that's privately owned.
Right.
Taxes, you could buy them, buy leases, I mean, that was something I brought to the meeting, it's, I was like, instead of doing dirt work, what if we bought out leases and built in those spots?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if that can be done, or what the rules are for that, but-
I don't know.
It's, it's a weird little-
Yeah. One, one of them, my understanding is, one of them, they're gonna tear down.
Landall, Landalls is gonna tear down the very end one on the, on the west line of them. Uh, that's already in the plans.
There's three more, and we weren't sure how many of those actually had, two or maybe just one of them had planes in them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're not all, not all used for plane storage.
But-
Which might be another thing, too, is if they were our hangars, we could control a little bit more.
What happens in-
Stipulations that, hey, you need to have a plane in there, you can't just use it as storage.
There, there is, uh, a stipulation to this whole thing. If we build the hangar, that is, unless we're giving out the services for free, that is a money-making endeavor. If we build a money-making endeavor, uh, we are automatically disqualified or taken out of the running for discretionary funding for the next five years, I believe. But the idea was to build that hangar, drain our entitlement funds, let it build up over the next four to five years, and then, right when we come back into qualification for discretionary funds, that's when we would have our runway project, so.
Will this knock us out with property tax? Did you check that?
I, I doubt, I doubt it, because same thing with-
Well, it's FAA, so it's different. The farm ground up there works, but it doesn't work, you know, at the lagoons or anywhere else.
Yeah.
And just before we get there, I wanna know for a fact it doesn't knock us out.
No, it, I, I think no airport would take, under, no municipal airport would undertake building.
Wouldn't think so either, but I just, I-
That and fuel. Fuel would be another thing, but-
Well, you guys were up there with all the spray planes, remember two years ago, they cut that big rep in there when they were fueling planes and stuff?
Yep.
Did they do any damage up there this year?
Oh, it still looks nice. Yeah, that's six inches of asphalt makes a big difference.
Well, I'm just making sure, because, you know, we, that was one of the worries we had, and if they didn't get that back right, that's heavy as that truck was, you know, last year, they tore the tar out of that up there.
Oh, yeah. No, that, it, it made it, it ma, it doesn't look like they've been driving over it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that, I mean, that's where, uh, I was hoping, I was hoping last week I'd get answers and then bring it to council this week, but, um, I'm hoping for the next council meeting to have, have some more information.
Okay. Uh, police, fire. Hold on, admin and finance?
I'm going to the library board meeting, I guess, on Wednesday, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay. I'm planning on going there, too, so. I don't know yet.
Okay.
We do have a few appointments on here, uh, for convention tourism and the Airport Advisory Commission, and, uh, anybody have any questions on any of those appointments?
Move to approve the mayor's appointments, convention tourism, and the Airport Advisory Board, or Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand Ato.
Stand Ato.
Yep. Yes.
All right. Uh, next up, City Attorney, I don't think we have any business with you, do we?
I don't have any, uh, recommendation or, or need for an executive session unless the council members have something they want to, just as a, would be eligible for executive session treatment.
Discuss what?
Anything that's eligible for.
Oh.
Executive session. I do not have anything. But I guess I would report, we did an emergency raw sewage letter, and I think it evolved successfully, it was taken care of.
What about that? Address they had the rat stop.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask about, too.
Were you involved in that, John?
I wrote the notices, and the owner was served with them, and I, I'm not sure we were on the time sequence.
He said that it, they had, um, put the, done the stuff to get rid of the rats, and I think it was totally cleaned up. I think it might've gone, is that, that one didn't have to go through court?
Uh, well, we elected to do it civilly.
Civilly, right.
Because it's more of an emergency situation.
And he said it was cleaned up, and he had pictures of it.
And the garbage was supposed to be taken out.
It was gone.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
I got a question on the property category from here, where they're loading up all the iron and stuff.
The scrap iron?
Yeah. It's on the right-of-way street, does it need to be, have like a loading zone or something? Loading, I mean, a permit to say they can do that? I mean, I-
That's really a, your question for your zoning building permit, and see what you would like to do with that property. Yeah, technically, there's no, I don't think there's any zoning allows for a scrap iron or junkyard to be in that location. Easements are protected, and so, it's, uh, how to address that scrap, scrapper, and so, it's really, I'm glad to work with your building inspector and see what can be done.
Can we put out a, adopted ordinance that says that you can't do that on the right-of-way of the street?
Well, you know, that is a, really a-
We already have one.
Yeah. That is a public safety, if you wanna fine-tune it.
But if we already have one, then-
What I'm trying to say, they're not grandfathered in, so, yeah, when you adopt a, a public safety type of regulation, excuse me, uh, public safety type of regulation, it's not, that prior use is not grandfathered like a zoning, and so, you can enact laws to protect the health and welfare of the community, so, if you wanna upgrade it, change it, twist it, put more financial synergies into doing what's right, yeah, I'd be, gotta look at it, but I'd like your building inspector to look at it first.
Well, the whole thing of it is, is they're providing a service that we have with Kenny Cooper. Kenny Cooper used to go around and get all the scrap, he used to go out there and get all the refrigerators, the stoves, and it's better, because nobody goes and dumps them in the country or down, out in the middle of nowhere now. I'm not saying these guys are right, I'm not saying they're wrong. My point is, is there any land that we can lease to them, or they can use that is not on the right-of-way? You know, and, 'cause I kinda, I had this feeling this was gonna be coming up, because it's an isor, I got it, and we said something to them before, and they kept it behind the gate for a while. Now, they're back out there again, and I don't feel that the city should have to babysit them, but I also think we need to be careful here, because they get rid of a lot of stuff. They come up to your house, they'll gather it up, they'll take it away at absolutely no cost. So, we need to take that into mind, also. I, did I, um, can they, can they pay the dollar and use some of that flood area land down there?
I don't, yeah, that would be nice, but I don't think you can use it for that.
No, that's, that'd be perfect for them, down in that area, but, you know, 'cause there's some that have two or three lots who don't have anything on it.
I, I agree, I mean, I, I don't wanna see it in the ditches along country roads anymore than the next guy, but, and I, I believe in generosity and grace and all that, but I think we've shown a lot of that by letting the right-of-way be piled six-foot high with junk metal for years, so, I think, yes, we need to work with finding a solution, but we need to find a solution, so.
Yeah, I just don't wanna go over there and bully them out of it, because then we're just, it's gonna roll over to something else, and it may not show right away.
So, maybe-
The worst part is, it'll be on somebody's front porch or somebody's yard, and then we have a nuisance, and then we have to figure out what to do.
Maybe the key is communication, maybe it's conversation. We say, "Look, we don't wanna bully you, we don't wanna come in here and lay down the letter of the law, because the letter of the law says you can't have this here, but what can we do? What would work for you? How can we solve this? Try to open a dialogue."
Will you keep, you know, we could send Will over, is that Will's responsibility, go talk to him? We send Will over there and say, "Listen, you keep it behind that gate and that fence like you said you would before, or else you're just gonna have to vacate doing this." I mean, to me, I wanna be fair to them, but like I said, I don't want it, I don't wanna put something into motion that we're gonna have to have other people out picking up garbage at the site, you know?
And it's not like the material's circulating. I've kept close enough track to see that it's the same stuff that's been sitting there for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
The weeds are growing up around it, I mean, it's not like it's, it's there in transitional phase, it's just, I think they're waiting for iron to get high, which is gonna be a while.
It's not, it's not changing, huh?
No.
And that's exactly what I was saying, thinking that if the price of iron was up, it'd probably be gone.
It would be gone.
Yeah, but it's not going up many times soon, that I see.
Is there a place where we could have, be after scrap iron, just drop off a dumpster and just have people fill it up?
Roll off?
They won't let you keep it that long. I work with them. I mean, they, they let you-
We ours for like four months before they-
Then I don't know how you're getting away with it, because with me, they're like two weeks at the max, and they wanna come get it. They wanna pull.
Well, they, they work with us, so I'm sure they could work with this.
That's all I'm saying, is if, maybe have a conversation, do some research, try to find, there's no harm in asking. We've got lots of kinda fallow areas, we could probably put a couple roll offs in and maybe find a solution. I, yeah, I just don't think it's good in the right-of-way, tall weeds, it's stacked high, it's on a main drag, I mean, let's work with it.
Let's have Smitty salvage.
That's all I have, Mr. Bear. All right. Um, roundtable.
Um, South Penn Street, where we had all the concrete done, seventy-seven South, are we gonna go back and paint lines on Kestner Block and otherwise parking lines? I know we were gonna wait a while, but were we gonna do that before winter, or are we gonna wait till next spring?
We, they've been doing lines slowly.
Have they been working on that street?
Well, on everything.
I know there have been other streets.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks. But what about like parking stalls?
They prioritize, the parking stalls aren't priority, the crosswalks are-
Oh, I understand, they're just, you know, there's a church and a restaurant, and other people park along there, too.
Well, the church is actually, the church is responsible.
Even on the public street?
That's not- That's theirs.
Even on the new concrete?
Yes.
And that rule applies to everywhere in town?
That's just, it's-
Or just there. Or just there? I'm just curious where, cause somebody will ask me, they'll say, "Well, what about here? What about there?"
The, the, yeah, we've addressed that with the church, uh, since I've been here at least once, um, that, that is, they're, they're parking.
Okay.
Yeah. But when, they're eventually getting to parking stalls.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Anything else? Diane? Terry?
Um, no.
Nothing? Keith? Parker?
We're gonna discuss that? Little pool letter that comes to the council?
Yeah, yeah.
This is in the highlights, so you might have...
The way was in here. Must've disappeared.
Was that from the swimming pool?
Yeah, it has all those numbers to break down.
Well, it has their attendance numbers. It doesn't really offer any other information.
We will at the end, uh, we have to wait till we get to the end of this month, we have the last payroll that we're doing right now, before we give you the numbers of how many dollars we took in?
No, no, I'm asking the numbers of disciplinary problems we had, GDA probably had...
Dad's not gonna be in here, I have it.
Um, the list of things that she thinks needs to be done or has to be done.
I do have that.
The repairs, the improvements.
I do have repairs and improvements if you want.
I mean, it's, it's hard to get that stuff done right now if we don't know about it.
Well, I mean, if she submitted them with the...
Okay.
But the disciplinary stuff, we don't have.
You wouldn't get that.
It's hard to take care of the complaints if you don't know what's going on.
Right, but employee stuff is not something...
No, no, it's not employee, I'm talking about the public displays of affection that I heard complaints about, the pool stinking and not being complete, cleaned that I heard complaints about, I mean, it's, that's the type of stuff I'm talking about. I'm talking about how many days was the pool closed for weather? How many late starts did we have because of weather? I mean, all that should be in a report, so we have a rough understanding of truly what happened this year without standing down there and watching and holding hands. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
How many guards did we have this year?
Boy, twenty, twenty-some. I, I'd have to count them exactly, I can't off the top of my head.
Did we have nineteen, two managers?
We had four, we'll say we had two co-managers and two assistant managers.
And how many of them left to go to college? Of the gar, of the managers?
Um, both assistants and one, one of the co-managers, and the other one, I don't know what she does, I don't know what she does.
Both, both of the managers left to go to college?
One manager and both co-manag, or both assistant managers left to go to college.
So, we had one, so we had one manager that was still here?
I would assume she's still here, I did not ask, she was speaking, talking about moving, so I don't know if she has or relocating, so I don't know when that was happening.
Okay.
She stayed, both of those two were here through the last day, the both co-managers were, through the last day. Till, through the last day that the pool was open, but now they're gone.
Okay. So, those people were a little upset because the pool didn't stay open another week like most of the other pools did around.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know what the other pools did.
Well...
They must've had really good staffing then.
Well, Waterville closed when we did, I thought, cause I thought it said that they were going to college. Maybe I'm wrong, I thought that's what they said in the paper.
I've always said we need to find a way to keep our pool open longer. I, I went on a bit of a bike ride on Saturday and I went by, and then less than four open swimming pools on that bike ride in southeast Nebraska. So, it's, I mean, I don't, I know what it'd take, I think a lot of us know what it'd take, piles of money. Sure would be nice to have it open on these hotter now than it's been.
I'm the person who always wants it open.
At, at least another week, I mean, most of them were, I think Blue Rapids was the only one, and that's because they're starting new construction.
Oh, I don't know, I thought I read that Waterville had, because they had all college students in there, I know how it started, so...
Anyway, at least, at least, at least till the next weekend, I mean, most of them were, so...
We stayed open as long as we had staff.
Well, that's why I'm wondering why, if we had at least one manager that didn't leave to go to school, that we could've maybe kept open.
The majority of the remaining staff were fifteen and under, we couldn't work them as much as we needed to.
Yeah, okay.
Or, fifteen and over, fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah. Out of and under.
Anything else, Parker?
That's it for right now.
Okay. Nothing? Um, the only thing I was gonna ask, uh, did we find any more information on the, uh, fire station on the foundation?
We, we haven't received any more information, uh, as far as pricing for the pilings that we discussed to alleviate the foundation issues.
And hopefully heard back from them, or I know they were hoping that they would hear some information back by the end of the week.
Yeah, I was hoping so too, but I haven't gotten anything.
Okay, alright, we'll see when that, what those numbers come in at. That's all I had, though.
You too, George.
It's a second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?